Report.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, Dr. Ross Riker, the medical examiner for Good Hugh County and the chief medical examiner for the Southern Minnesota Regional Medical Examiner's Office. Here to give us our annual report. Feel free to ask questions as we go along. So just as a reminder, the dark blue counties are the ones in which we provide medical examiner services for in total for those counties. And then we do consult autopsies for the ones in light blue, so that's Steel County and La Crosse. And so. So it's kind of nice because we really are, you know, have a pretty good handle of this sort of in the southeast corner of Minnesota. As we go through the data, that'll be.
Well, it's quite a large area you have that you're in charge of.
It is a pretty large area. But we have amazing death investigators, which is on this slide, and this is what really keeps the wheels on the bus going. You know, we have our forensic pathologist here, and then we have my colleague here, Monica Kendall, who's our supervisor. But what's really important are the local investigators in Good Hugh County, because they're the ones that are responding to the calls and the scenes 24/7/365. And so they're really truly the frontline staff that are that are making the office function. And then at the bottom, you have our other investigators that are in the central office in Olmsted and Rochester that answer calls and help coordinate things. And the final line is really our administrative staff that supports, you know, the paperwork and putting together talks such as this today. So it's a pretty robust team, to say the least. So here's just a high level summary. So we had a total of 469 deaths and 401 of those were reported to the medical examiner's office. So we'd much rather have deaths reported to us and be able to look into them and either decline jurisdiction or do what we need to on those than having something come to us after the fact. We did 40, excuse me, 58 postmortem examinations, 47 were complete, nine of them were external examinations and two were partial. An external examination typically is when someone has sustained injuries and they're well documented, but will still look at the body to document those injuries and what's left. But we don't necessarily need to do an autopsy to determine the cause and manner of death. And, you know, 302 were certified or not certified by us. So we declined jurisdiction on 302 of those cases. So we looked into them, said these are natural, they don't fall under jurisdiction and turned it back to the primary care, whoops, physician to sign it out. I don't know offhand what the percentage is, but, you know, we're touching the vast, vast majority of the deaths within Good Hugh County in one way or the other. We're seeing those, whether it's that are being reported to us in a number of different ways. So. So just as a brief reminder, what's on the death certificate? We have the cause of death, that's the underlying reason why someone died, the manner of death. And then there's a whole bunch of other information that's not on the death certificate that goes to the family, but it's part of what we gather during our investigation, which is very important for public health. So were they at work? It's a transportation related, were they pregnant at the time or recently and so forth? So there's lots of that kind of information that's being gathered behind the scenes. It's then used by the families and relatives for either just to, you know, close foreclosure and understand what happened. And also for obviously legal and other sort of processes. And then our information then flows up to the Minnesota Department of Health, then ultimately to the CDC. So when you see these big numbers of how many drug overdoses or how many motor vehicle accidents, et cetera, you know, really starts at the grassroots level from our investigators going to the scene. And then basically all the way up to the national level. So it's kind of a, an interesting and neat process, to be honest. So. So this is the manner of death, number of deaths by manner of death. So we have natural accidents, suicide, homicide and undetermined. The vast majority of the deaths were natural. We had 40 accidents, seven suicides and no homicides. And so I'll go into the details of each one of these categories in the next several slides. On these bar graphs, the colored ones, these are all the deaths in which the deaths occurred in the county. We're going to see some other bar graphs later on, which are dark blue. And those are ones in which even they either died in the county or the injury occurred in the county. So that will include individuals that may have been injured in the county and then transported and died outside the county. So you get a sense of how many deaths occurred in the county and how many were related to injuries that could have, that did occur in the county.
Can you give me an idea as to what undetermined would mean?
It means we don't have enough information to determine the cause or manner in which they died. So typically, these are ones in which either the autopsy doesn't reveal anything, which is pretty rare, or more commonly, they're decomposed. And so you just don't have, or skeletonized remains mainly decomposed, and you just can't get enough information to figure out what happened to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is by unnatural deaths. So we've taken out the, the natural deaths. And so we can see we have one choking, two burns, and then firearms, which are the suicides, jump or fall. We'll go into that in more detail. So these are not really people jumping off of buildings, but these are people that are falling and typically older. They break a bone or they hit their head. And so we can, and we have some data on that, too.
That's what I was thinking about last winter when I fell down five times on the ice. Starting.
We'll save your spot, we'll save your spot for later. It's, yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's a real, I mean, it's, it's, it's something that people don't think about, you know, right? You think about like your mom or grandmother or whatever dying of some natural disease. You don't think about them having an injury and dying of something like that, but it is.
And it's not necessarily that they died from the fall. It's that the fall was kind of a precursor to.
Right, initiated a sequence of events. So if you break your hip, there's about a, depending on the studies, like a 50% mortality within the first one to two years afterwards. So it's a bad indicator, so. So motor vehicle accidents, poisonings, which is the public health term for drug overdoses, which we'll also go into. And there's 11 of those, that's from those that died in the county. If you go to suicide by means, I think we had three firearms, one hanging, one motor vehicle accident, and two of our drug overdoses were suicides. And so that's important to remember when we get to the drug overdose data, the two of those were suicides, that they weren't all accidents. So suicide by age group, so this is something we've started collecting over the last several years. You know, one in the 18 to 25, two in the 26 to 44, and two, or three, excuse me, in the 45 to 64, and one over 65. So I'm just trying to get a sense of the age groups that are impacted. So this is a suicide rate per capita. We have the, the counties across the bottom, the national average is the red line, and you can see Minnesota is the second from the right. So this is including all deaths related to injuries that would have occurred in the county. So this also includes if they got, they were injured and got transported and then subsequently died afterwards. So these numbers, and some of them will be higher. Again, and as we go through this, we're dealing with relatively small numbers. So just a couple additional or less deaths could affect that percentage pretty significantly. No homicides, like to keep this as blank as possible. This is the suicide, excuse me, homicide rate per capita. So all the homicides that we had were in Olmsted County this year. So and several of those were from outside of Olmsted County that were transported there. Accidental deaths by type. So again, falls is what really kind of jumps out at you, followed by poisonings and drug overdoses, that's nine. This is accidental death. So we, we saw that there was 11 drug overdoses before, and now there's nine. That's because two of those were suicides. So this is accidental deaths, not all drug overdoses. And then we had, that's the majority of those there.
A question on the falls of that 2020, people just weren't going out? Was it COVID and they stayed home? I mean, is that?
That would be a reasonable, yeah, that would be a reasonable interpretation of that. So typically, it's kind of interesting, I mean, as a side note, that when you see economic downturns, other sort of huge events occur, that definitely drives the medical examiner case loads. Typically, when there's like economic downturn, people, you know, they're not going to work, so they're not driving, right? So that decreases your risk. They have less resources and so they're, you know, not going out, they're not, they don't have money to buy, you know, as much alcohol or drugs or to other sorts of things. And so all of those kind of daily activities decrease. And with that, you've decreased that risk factor across the population of these other events occurring as well. So. Yeah, get talked about that all day long, actually. And how is that different during COVID with the drug overdose deaths increasing? And anyhow. So this is accidental deaths by vehicle types. So three were automobiles or SUVs, we had no motorcycles, one pedestrian, and the other was a motorized scooter. And some of the other counties, we've had a number of motorcycle crashes, and those were pretty much all related to being like deer collisions with deer. And so just sort of a somewhat interesting note in risk of deer in the rural communities that we live in.
In the other, I would take it that you would put like side by sides for wheelers and stuff like that?
Yes.
In, has there, have you seen an uptick in others? I mean, obviously not Goodie County. Is there, has there been an uptick because we've got Maryland road and more of them riding off road? Just a lot of them out there.
I don't know that we have seen an uptick in it.
That's a good thing.
Actually, you know, I mean, so this is, I skipped ahead to the next slide because this addresses that issue. So this is where the, the accidents occurred and then by the vehicle that was involved. So, you know, their ATV, off-road vehicles, motorcycles, scooter, tractor, et cetera. I would say, I don't think we've seen an uptick, but the list of things, the types of motor, types of motorized things out there is increased. And I will say that what we have seen is like where these events are occurring is like all over the place in a sense, you know, maybe they're like working on clearing brush under the power lines and their, you know, ATV rolls over. And so it's kind of a lot of outliers in that regard. And this is the number of fatalities by the, the locations from year over year. There's a couple of these dots that look close together, but if you really zoom in, they're not as, they're not in the exact same location. We're just seeing this at a higher power magnification. So again, just to try to get a sense of is there a dangerous area or place that's at risk for those kind of accidents? Motor vehicle fatality rate per capita. And so again, these are ones that even if the injury occurred in the county and they were transported and died elsewhere, that's included here. And so we had five that died at the scene, two were transported and one was a suicide. So really five accidental deaths in the county that died here, but a total of seven. And you can see where the national average is as well with the red line. And then you can see again, the per capita rates again, very pretty steeply just because of the numbers we're talking about. Accidental deaths by age group. And so this is obviously skewed far for the older population and that 85 to 94 category. And this is consistent across the other counties as as far as the peak, the, those falls related deaths. And then we're starting to collect where the, the injuries occurred. You know, just to see if there is potentially like, you know, public health could do some type of intervention, if you will. And, you know, there's 12 that were in the residence, three in a care facility and nine in assisted living. So just trying to get a sense, you know, where they're occurring. I mean, falls are a gigantic issue everywhere, and it's just hard to manage them for a lot of different, a lot of different reasons.
But that, that data right there is really critical when we think about assisted living and, and living care facilities and staffing and the ability to have enough staff so that people aren't getting out of bed when they should. And all of those different things that really that spike could be related somewhat to staffing issues.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's complicated because it definitely could be related to staffing issues and it could be related to timing, too, right? Like if a staff is tied up with another complex patient and they said they're going to be there at 9:30 to take them to the bathroom and it's like 9:40, the person's like, I gotta go to the bathroom. This is someone who's going to maybe get up and go to the bathroom and now they're at risk and they fall, you know? And so there's all these kind of dynamics. And so, I mean, as a total side note, but they might find it interesting. So we just had a conference in Rochester like two weeks ago, and they're doing this research project now with what they call basically like a black box, like in the, like you would have in airplanes. And they have this, they're doing some research on doing this like in operating rooms. And so they're like recording the surgeons and doctors' voices. They have videos on it and then it can go back, it's all anonymized, they can go back and start to understand if some event occurred, what was happening that led to this event? And then applying, you know, AI, so artificial intelligence to these scenarios to say like, okay, this is when the patient's heart rate dropped, it was when this was happening and, you know, these really complex systems. And sort of like, how do you go back and reevaluate these? And the speaker, I asked him specifically, like, what would be the next area that you would consider looking into? And he said falls, actually, right? Because it's very complex if, you know, how are you going to figure out and sort of predict? Like, can you use an algorithm to predict like this person's at risk for a fall? And like, this is the time period of day that they're going to be in a fall. This is when we would do an intervention, this is when we would have someone there to help them. So it's amazing, something like falls and like hand washing are just things that like plagued us forever and we're still struggling with them. But I digress. Death related poisonings or drugs. And so we had five illegals, drug overdoses, six prescriptions, but that includes two suicides. And we'll sort of break this down a little bit more. We had three in the 25 to, excuse me, 26 to 44, and then seven in the 45 to 64 age group. And across the, the counties that we cover, this is what we've really been seeing pretty consistently is that, that age group is at risk for the accidental drug overdoses is 45 to 64. That seems, it's not, a lot of people think it's in that sort of 18 to 25, but at least the data that we've been seeing is in this slightly wrong group of individuals.
And yet we target a lot of our drug stuff to 18 and under.
Yeah, but, you know, that's could be the prevent.
That would be by this, you'll say you're missing the mark.
Or maybe it means you're being successful.
Well, that could be too.
You know, you're preventing, you're preventing that, those individuals from starting or using or when.
Do you look at deaths that are by actual prescription where the patient had a prescription from their physician versus street drugs?
Yes.
And what do you find there?
I will show you in two slides.
All right.
Yeah, so what we do for, for every death, basically, we go, we, if there's medications there, we collect all the medications, write down the prescription, count the number of pills and compare it to what was prescribed versus how many pills were there. And then we have access to the Minnesota basically drug registry. So we can go in and see what they were prescribed and who prescribed them and what they were supposed to have. So we could, we're constantly going in and, and checking that. So this is the drug overdose rate per capita. So this includes those that were, the overdose occurred in the county but were transported. So there was nine accidental, two suicides and two were transported. So there's a total of 11 accidental overdoses. And so I think, you know, what's interesting, and this is a conversation that really started with you all last year, is looking at how many were or weren't transported and what was the nature of those individuals that overdosed? And so it was really the discussion with you all last year, they got us looking at these at a case by case basis. And what we have found is that population, that 45 to 64 year old that are overdosing, they're using, they're chronic drug users and then they've had maybe prior overdoses, long history of drug use. And particularly last year, when they were basically all fentanyl, almost all fentanyl related. That's what we're seeing in other counties now, too. You know, these are probably individuals that now have drugs that are different than they, or they're used to, if you will, of, of taking. And so it's like, it has the fentanyl in it, so it's more potent than what they're used to taking. And so, so Good Use Data is a little different than the other counties because the number of fentanyl deaths, our fentanyl related ones is lower actually in comparison. And so we had one cocaine, one cocaine and meth, two meth, fentanyl and meth, and then fentanyl and another, so a total of seven. With three were really the fentanyl related. So methamphetamine is still out there. We see more and more deaths related to methamphetamine and fentanyl together. Yeah, and so, I mean, yeah, it's, so I think the other trend that we've seen is we see less individuals that are transported. We're seeing people that are dying at home because they take the, their drugs and it's like so potent that they're unconscious immediately, no one finds them until they're deceased. They've had multiple scenes in which we've had multiple fatalities at the same scene. So they take the drugs and they're over, both of them or several of them are overwhelmed by the drugs. And so there's no one even conscious enough to call 911 or try to administer Narcan. So it's the nature of the potency of fentanyl. Natural deaths by causes. And so this really parallels the national data with heart disease and cancer, followed by pulmonary disease, which is now on the decline, which was probably that peak was a reflection of COVID related deaths. So we're starting to see that trend back down. So it's down to 35. Neurologic disorders is down a little bit, but again, that may increase as the population ages. And we have more individuals with dementia, strokes and other kind of neurologic issues. Deaths by age group. And so this is a quick way to see what's going on in a community. I mean, this is, it's good because we keep adding like age groups instead of just greater than 65. Now we're at the 95 plus. So, you know, so looking at this, you can see that the vast majority of the deaths are in the older population, and that's a reflection of natural deaths. When you see these peaks in the younger age groups, that population's not dying of natural diseases. So when you see those, it's a reflection of accidents, suicides and homicides. So the, the, this is a good shift. It's a very easy and quick way to get a sense of what's going on in a community with a simple bar graph. And then this is just a summary of our activities for the past year, 305 investigations. We signed 99 death certificates, went to 105 scenes, did 58 autopsies, and we had 401 deaths reported to us. So relatively consistent year over year. So kind of a whirlwind tour of the activities, but.
Excellent, my part. It's just, I don't like saying the word fascinating, but it is kind of to dive into these kinds of numbers and try to understand how it's affecting the population of Goodie County and the region, really.
Yeah.
You know, that we, you know, that we didn't have as many fentanyl deaths that positive. We still got the meth, we still got, you know, the other, but yeah, it's interesting stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of information, a lot of information, yeah.
Yeah, if you're occurred, uh, so you, you said that when they, you collect the prescriptions, when there's a drug overdose, that they're there. What about the ones that aren't prescribed?
I mean, like the illicit drugs or the ones that are?
They got them.
Oh, yeah, we prescribe to them, but they still got them. Yeah, we collect those too. We collect those and document those too. And so then if we have something that wouldn't been in the illicit category, then we would release that to law enforcement. But yeah, we're documenting all of that.
And how would those show up then?
They would show up as illicit drugs because it's a, once you've diverted it, it becomes illicit versus illicit. So, yeah, we're capturing that too, because you do see that, right? They have like someone else's bottle of pills there. You know, and then, I mean, and then what's even happening now? I mean, I mean, you know, there was a case, this guy was very ill. This is just an anecdotal case that very ill, very, very large guy. And he had a million reasons to be deceased, but our death investigator, you know, it's like very meticulous death investigator, went through all of his pills and found like one bottle. I mean, he, I mean, it's just like tables of pills and it's on one bottle that wasn't prescribed to him. And this, you know, had almost no pills left in it. So we decided this individual needed to come in for an autopsy. I would say that many places wouldn't do that, they would just say, oh, he's over 60 and got all these things and wouldn't do it. And so we do the autopsy, much to my chagrin on a Saturday. I was like, okay, one more case, you know, you know, what's this going to be? It turns out it was a fentanyl overdose and that prescription bottle that wasn't addressed to him was like oxycodone. So clearly what had happened is he'd bought something that was intended to look like it was a diverted prescription, when in fact it was a bottle of fake pills. So I mean, I think when you look at data, particularly around the country, keeping in mind of what that death investigation system looks like. And, you know, I'm doing a lot of work with one of our epidemiologists who's looking at the big data at the state and CDC level. And that's a huge factor in trying to interpret like what is reported. Because if you have thorough, great investigators like we do, they're going to find that stuff. If you have other people that are like, oh, one less case we have to deal with, they're not going to find that. So the irony is you might have a higher percentage of drug overdose in a place that has a more robust system because you're actually finding and, and appreciating that. But I think that's valuable because otherwise it's just under the surface and people don't have any idea. It's not accurate data and you don't know what's going on. And so that's, when you look at it, the state and the, even state and at the national level, you see that variability. And so I'm working with this PhD epidemiologist and she's like, I don't understand, like, how are there like no drug overdoses in this parish in Louisiana? And I'm like, well, because the coroner's not investigating any, you know what I mean? And it was like, there's a way that, there's one way to get rid of your drug overdoses is just call them heart disease, you know? I mean, that's a little bit of one of the, like with COVID, people talked about all the spikes and, you know, heart disease deaths that occurred outside the hospital. And part of that, from my, my perspective is that, like, the medical examiners weren't bringing in these deaths because they were afraid they were going to be COVID and they didn't want to do COVID autopsies. So your gut is just to call it heart disease, right? So they just say atherosclerotic cardiovascular disease. And then when people go back and look at the data, they don't realize these are all cases that would have at least been brought in, investigated. And many of them would have had autopsies and had a different cause of death. So, yeah, so it gets you in an artifactual spike in disease without even, you know, thinking about it. So.
Is there any data kept on when Narcan is used and it saves lives? I mean, is that?
I mean, we don't capture that, but that would be more with like EMS and law enforcement usage.
But it does help. I mean, people can pop out of this instantly, right? If the fentanyl overdose?
Yes. I mean, one of the, yes, they do. Yeah, I mean, definitely, there's no doubt that Narcan will save someone's life in the acute setting. I mean, one of the challenges is some of these individuals have such high tolerances that it takes a lot of Narcan. We see now patients in the hospital because Narcan has a relatively short half-life, the time that's effective for it. And so you actually see people that are in the hospital and they're on Narcan drips. Because if they stop giving them Narcan, they'll overdose again, even for like a day or more in the hospital, just because of their tolerance and the amount of opioids that they have in their system.
So he didn't mean they took more drug, he meant the Narcan wore off and then narcotic kicked in again.
Exactly, because the opioids have a very long duration of effect, whereas the Narcan is very short. So you have to keep administering it to, I mean, the first time I read that a while ago now in those medical record, I was just more that that would be someone's, you know, amount of opioids that they had had in the bloodstream before. I mean, because if you think about it, like, if someone's giving you anesthesia, right? You don't have to put them on a narc, you gave them enough drugs to put someone asleep to do surgery on them. And then now they wake up and are fine. And here's someone who's walking around and then becomes unconscious and has a concentration that's above like what you would potentially be using as an anesthetic.
It would depend on the narcotic, too, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I listened to This American Life last week about a program where it was don't use alone. So it was people who were going to basically inject fentanyl who were on the phone with a caller with a video connection. And it sort of seemed a little bit crazy to me, but it appeared that it was saving lives. Because then these people on the phone were calling 911 if the person basically became unconscious. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not. It's an interesting This American Life.
I think that's, I think what it shows, I mean, I would hate to be the person on the other end of the phone call.
Who was being interviewed had a daughter who was a fentanyl addict. And that was what motivated her to, to be doing this. And another was a EMS who had been a fentanyl addict. And he was also one of the people who was doing it. And uh, he was also one of the people who was doing it.
I mean, I think what it shows you is that if the situation has gotten such that people are trying to do whatever they can think of.
That's what they were doing.
And it's just basically like, let's throw everything at the wall and see what can do it. You know, I think that's kind of what my sense is around the country is people are trying different things. And maybe people will find something that, that works.
And maybe the over the counter Narcan will have some impact that maybe.
Yeah. There you go.
Excellent information.
Great.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a great day. Thank you.